The Town of Crewe, Virginia, the regular council meeting for May 11, 2015 will come to order. Will you please rise and join with me in the invocation and the prayer.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're welcome. That's to let you know we have new carpets. And I see they switched the ones on. Thank you. For my opening comments, I welcome you tonight. We're starting out on a very joyous occasion. I love celebrations and I love them when they are ones to where someone has accomplished something of great benefit to all of us and someone gets to be recognized. So at this time, I'm going to start this off. Mr. Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr., will you please join me up here? He always has a smile. No matter how serious it is, he'll at least smile at you before you learn the brevity of the situation. Ralph Tony, I'm not used to knowing you as Ralph Shelton, Jr. This is a pledge for me to stand before you and the town and our council. This is from the council and myself with the aid of one of our counciliers and your son giving the information together that we present this recognition to you. And it's from the Town of Crewe and the citizenry. Whereas Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. began his career with the Town of Crewe on February 1, 1975, serving as a police officer, having served previously as chief of police for the Town of Broadax. And whereas Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. was later promoted to sergeant, followed by acting chief of police. And whereas Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr., while a police officer, also began working in the public works department. And whereas after several years, Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. became a part-time deputy sheriff for Notaway County while continuing as a full-time employee with the public works department. And whereas Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. later left law enforcement to focus strictly on his role as director of public works for the Town of Crewe. And whereas Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. attended Parkview High School and continued his education with criminal justice classes at Alberta Community College. And whereas, together with Gloria, his wife of 46 years, Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. has two children, Ralph Tony Shelton, Jr. and Cynthia, as well as four grandchildren, Tripp, Paige, Audrey, and Tony. And whereas Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. further served the Crewe community as the Dixie Youth Coach and Commissioner of Baseball for the Crewe Burkeville Youth League. And whereas Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. hunting, fishing, and spending time with his family and until recently was an avid slow-pitch softball player. And whereas Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. has worked with selfless dedication for the Town of Crewe for 40 years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Crewe Town Council and Mayor do hereby congratulate Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. on his 40th anniversary with the town, calling upon all citizens of the Town of Crewe to recognize Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. for his commitment to making our community a better place to live, work, and raise a family. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Town of Crewe prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Ralph Tony Shelton, Sr. as an expression of the Town Council and Mayor's respect for his service. Thank you so much. Oh, you can't go in like that.
We wanted to get you something a little bit more, Tony. Appreciate you for everything that you've done. In my 14-plus years, I've learned a lot from you. I think we've worked well together, represented the town well. I've never known Tony not to care about what's going on in his town. He likes to work it all night, whatever it takes to do the job. So we wanted presenting with this. It says, "Presenting to Ralph T. Upper Tony Shelton, Sr. in grateful appreciation for 40 years of dedicated and untiring service to the Town of Crewe, effective February 1, 2015. Presented on behalf of citizens of the Town of Crewe by the Crewe Town Council, Mayor Sally T. Wilkerson, and Town Manager W. Wade Walker. This the 11th day of May, 2015."
Would all of the family please rise? Because I know with any husband, the wife, and the children and all, help to keep the employee going. Delegation from the Public and Citizens Commons. Do we have that?
Good evening. I come before you tonight simply to seek your assistance in making a stronger and more concerted effort to work with local law enforcement here in town with an ever-increasing presence of illegal drug activity in this town. My goal is for all of us to work together and to rid our small town of this unwanted and unwelcome individuals who are selling drugs to our residents and who are creating fear in many neighborhoods among our elderly citizens from the east end to the west end. I don't live in the town limits anymore, but I still have a vested interest. I do have a Crewe address, and I have many family members that do live in town, and I've had enough. Recent events over the weekend compelled me to come tonight to speak to you and primarily to speak on behalf of those family members who are fearful to come before the public to speak. Things are becoming more troublesome and more concerning. I spoke to one of the landlords today that this site has a problem with, and he informed me that it's pretty much out of his hands, and that it all goes back to you, the police force. I had a very positive meeting today with Chief Booth, and we're both on the same page. I also spoke to board member supervisor Gary Simmons, who is very much concerned, but unfortunately, he does not seem to be here tonight. I won't point out specific neighborhoods here because residents are fearful of repusal, but I will say that the library is one of the dark blocks, and supervisor Simmons and I agree that one of the problems is a Wi-Fi network that needs to be cut off at night, and that will help a lot for people hanging out around it. I want to ask now, a lot of these people here tonight are here because I asked them to come. I want to ask, how many in this room tonight agree that we have an increasing problem? Raise your hand. Have you had enough?
Yes.
And do you want these individuals out?
Yes.
What is our course of action that we can do and you as council can do? I'm asking you to make the funding resources available for our police chief to get the men on the streets and the officers on the streets that he needs to combat this problem. And in closing, I ask you to take a stronger stand. And a lot of you know that I'm a very Christian person. I do have a temper, I'm human. But I was reading today my daily bread, and it says, "The squeaky wheel." So I'm being the squeaky wheel tonight. It said, "God is certain not to be an unjust who must be harassed before he responds. He cares about us and hears us when we cry. It may feel like we're a squeaky wheel, but the Lord welcomes our prayers, and he will come to our aid. I am in no way comparing you to God, but you're our governing body, and I worship you because you are here in place to serve us." And I want to be the squeaky wheel on behalf of people like my mom. And y'all all know Patsy Vercel. She is not one to be scared. My mama was scared a lot, and that pissed me off. And I want you to do something. And with that saying, it's in your court. We want our town back.
Any more public comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
My street, West Tennessee Avenue, and West Tennessee Avenue here by Broad Street, they're separated. I've called the police, I called Sheriff's Department twice. The officers couldn't find West Tennessee Avenue, my number, which is near 100 blocks of West Tennessee Avenue. West Tennessee Avenue is upper. So it's Maryland Avenue, West Maryland Avenue. They can't find it. My question is, when you hire a new police officer, how long do you make him ride along before he finds the street?
It depends on the officer hired.
It took 25 minutes. We had guns pointed at our house. So I wonder if there... Maybe we can eliminate... See, when you come up West Carolina, it runs into Page 2. Page 3 runs into West Tennessee. So when you come up, although they told them the Broad Street, they were still confused. They could only see Page Street until she said stiff. Well, then they could, you know... I called in and told them, "Go up one more block and then cut over." It's dangerous, in a way, nowadays. And I was wondering if there's anything we can do. Probably not, but maybe we can eliminate the west, Upper West, or just say Upper West.
Yeah. I didn't realize that was Ralph. That's the first I heard this.
No, I called, I sent messages the night it happened. There was two individuals that were at Broad Street. When company left, it was 10:30 at 9:00. It was 11:08 when the police finally shut it up.
Do you know about what date that was?
Oh, of course. You're gonna have to call them.
Just give me a prompt.
Call Notaway. It's been twice.
Six months ago?
The second time, we didn't bother calling because we just took care of it ourselves.
Yeah, but was it two, three, six months ago?
Oh, God. It happened a while back. If you call the sheriff's office and just give them my house number, they pull it up.
Okay. Thank you. Goodbye.
My name is Tara Martin. I live right across the street from our park. We see drug deals, we see cussing, fighting. I'm a smoker. I don't smoke in the house. I go out there fairly often. I do call the police. They do come. I'm not sure what happens if they get tickets or if they... I've never seen anyone arrested. The portage John is constantly out there, and that's disgusting. They tear up the park. My personal opinion is, if they can't respect it and they can't, I don't think we need it. There are no small children there. I don't let mine go across there unless, you know, it happens to be a moment where there's no one there, but it's very rare. And the F-word is just the loudest word you hear. I mean, they come over and they sit on the flagpole with their devices and they're feeding off the Wi-Fi, listening to the rap music. And I mean, I think the police department does a lot. I just wonder, like, when they get off the bus there at key times, you know, if we can just sit there? Because they're there. They play football, you know, and just, it's insane. I mean, you can't even go out there. If we were to try to sell our house now, it would be a joke. And honestly, I would've thought if there was gonna be a park parked in front of my house, that I would've been notified prior. I mean, I just think that somewhere else would be a better suited place for that. I mean, over there next where Hooper is or wherever, where it's on a highway where it's more seen, it's just, it's complete chaos over there. And they destroy it. I know y'all spend money constantly to fix it. And the portage John, that is disgusting. You know, it's over. It's flipped over every day, and I'm tired of it. Look, I mean, I thought we lived in a nice, hard town, but we do not. And I don't know what that house is with the whole thing going on with raid and all of that, but they're just spilling over into the streets. And it's embarrassing.
Any other comments? Yes?
I'm Bill with the Crewe Burkeville Chamber. On Sunday, there's going to be an open house for the autism consultants. It's a new business in town. They're directly across from the town hall. They're going to have an open house. They're gonna have food, music, and meetings with families that are dealing with autism and how they are coming along with it. And on Monday, they are going to have, we are going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for them at 11 o'clock on Monday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Bill, did you say what time that open house is?
The open house is from 2 to 6 on Sunday.
Thank you. Any more comments? We thank you. We will take what you have said, and we will discuss it. Pardon? We'll give you some time, but we'll be back. You're welcome every time we open the door. Town Council, any comments? Moving to the consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be approved by one motion. Any item can be moved from the calendar at the request of the members of the council and may be voted on separately. In your packet, you have minutes for the regular town council meeting held Monday, April 13, 2015. You have minutes of the budget work session held Monday, April 27, 2015. And you have the bill sheet, and the town clerk has handed out additions, which of $8,831.19, which brings the total now of the bill sheet to $107,176.79. I'll give you a minute to look over the additions and make any comments.
May I move we approve the consent calendar when the additions to the bill sheet?
Yeah, I have a motion to approve. And a second, all in favor by eye? Any opposed like so? Okay, so carried. Okay, moving down to the town manager's report.
I'll start out with budget. As y'all know, we had a work session two weeks ago. We discussed several items, a lot of corrections that we brought up at that meeting. And they've been input into the proposed budget, and we're at a point right now where we need possibly a couple of answers in order to button this thing up so we can have a public hearing in our June meeting. Specifically, the things that were left unfinished was the proposed raise employees. We used 3% as a sample. We talked about a vehicle, a town vehicle. For me, we haven't been able to talk to rural development about a 55, 45 grand. The cost of the vehicle is, I would say approximately $26,000, something on the EBITDA. And so for the budget, we're not sure. What we'd like to do is I'd like the council to start cutting the budget and button this thing up so we can get it to public hearing, council. If it's necessary, we can have a work session to discuss it further. We're pushing the timer a little bit there. I'd like to go in and get it done. Right now, as of today, we have a budget. After making the corrections that we talked about in our work session, there was an additional $7,040 in revenue that I plugged in for a reserve for the law board. Nothing set as strong as y'all know. Keep in mind, a budget is a guide. It's something that we try to stick with and stay close to and support. But it is a guide, and we can always make changes down the road if council chooses. I wanted to mention quickly, spring cleanups this week. I hope everybody noticed that. I hope that they get the word out. We're a light today, I think. And this is, to me, has always been a tremendous thing, an advantage for the citizens. If you've got things laying around and you just don't know what to do with, you want to throw them away. It might be an old washing machine or something sitting in the basement, you don't know what to do with it. Put it out there in town and get it up, or we can clean up our alleys. I want to thank the constituents in the chamber, I think. Some of the council members went out Saturday morning to get some cleaning up on their own. They volunteered. Well, we appreciate that, and that's what the town needs. So keep that in mind throughout the week. I want to talk for a moment about grass cutting. Again, this is a major problem. This is something we keep talking about, and we really haven't come up with a good solution yet. Our guys have started cutting some of these properties. Granted, we have not sent our notices, but we've waited longer. Grass is four feet high. We had a bush holiday, and we're gonna kill them. We're gonna go in and kill them, and we'll get paid fine if we don't. And we just have to eat, because that's what we're all against. I do think we need to revisit the ordinance where we changed to seven days instead of 10. I'd like five, with councilman, the doctor that mentioned, give them a weekend, which is a good idea. But something's gotta be done with this that's just getting out of hand. And y'all see it all over town. It's some houses that are occupied, it's most of the houses that are not. And in a great many cases, they cut one day a day. You couldn't see the Realtor sign for the grass. So there's a Realtor trying to sell his property. And y'all know how I feel about that. I've said it all along. I feel like the Realtor ought to take care of that property. But our attorney says she didn't think that's a good idea to push that, so I won't do that. But you would think that if some guy's in business like that, they'd want to keep... So we're maintaining that property for them to sell. Something wrong with it. So it really hits home, it sounds like a small problem, but if you ride around and look at it, if you talk to Tony and the guys that have to go to cut these yards, they'll tell you, they'll tell you exactly what's going on. So I want to revisit that at some point, probably hopefully in the next meeting. Go ahead and have a public hearing and get that all changed, because that'll help a lot, go to seven days. Right now, up in Central Harris, it's too late anyway. If it's four feet high, it's not gonna grow much more anyways. But some of it got to the point where we just had to do something. I wanted to update everyone on our derelict buildings. Most of the other, there were four properties that we were focusing on. That's not to say that there are probably four more, but we're trying to get through these four and call it a learning curve, if you will, in that same light, to continue the learning curve. I think what we need to do, and we're waiting on the property on East Carolina Avenue. Our attorney has petitioned the judge to release that property to us. We're confident that that property happened. Once it does happen, then we advertise to take that building down. We'll have another feel for what it costs for town to do that, and then we can move on with these other properties because they are first-class. The only other one that was actually for them was the old theater building. That's something that we probably need to get a professional to come in and look at. There's a law that supposedly is supporting law, that laws to Larry Wayne's. So we need some kind of professional help in that, if we take that down, it's not the compromise is built. I think that's all on that. Tony, who was mentioned previously, we talked about the possibilities of changing our R1 zoning to allow certain types of in-home businesses, specifically internet-based businesses. Tessie has provided us with some information. I bet you all have seen that. If not, we can get you some more. At this point, I think what we need to do is probably form a committee among ourselves to look at how we would like to word that if we want to go forward. Once we do that, we present it to the plan and commission. Plan and commission will review it, and then they'll make their recommendation to council, if that's what council needs. So if we need to go back and review all of that, she's got some comments, I think, that she brought along. I know this has been all going for a while. This is not something we wanted to jump into real quick. Public, all one sections of town are not allowed any type of businesses. It's come to light, you know, certain businesses that can be operated in a home through the internet that would cause any problems, parking and that type of thing. So it's time to change that. Just to make a change. So I'd like the others to revisit that. And I'd go top.
Any questions in the town manager?
With the four buildings that were, we have on the list, can we add one more to our learning curve list? And that's the one on West Tennessee that we spoke about at the last meeting.
Up towards the stoplight.
Right, yeah. The one without roof?
Yes. Yes. West Dark House. I know it's a little...
Scott-style. Any other comments? All right, Town and Trinity.
Yes, thank you. And a lot of what I have to go over tonight kind of echoes what Wade has already said. So first is the grass issue. We have an ordinance right now that allows the town to cut the grass in someone's yard if it gets up to 10 inches high. And before the town cuts that grass, it has to give, you know, the 10-day notice, and then after that, it can put a lien on the property for the cost that it, you know, has incurred by cutting the grass. What we have been talking about for some time is either shortening the length of the notice or shortening the length of the grass. And so I know that we had discussed the seven-day notice to cutting the grass. There's also an option of shortening the length of the grass, which may help issue too. But I would request that if it's council's desire, that, you know, the next step would be to authorize a public hearing or the change in that ordinance, if you all want to do that. Regarding the question with Tessie, we talked about it at the last council meeting. There's a lot of properties that are, number one, derelict, and, number two, you know, delinquent and taxes. And in order to sell those properties to satisfy the taxes, it would have to be delinquent for two years, and then after that, you can sell them. I know there was some curiosity about kind of what's the next steps once the properties are delinquent. And I printed out just kind of a little spreadsheet on it. Unfortunately, and you all know, as the chairman, the D. might have made 10 comments. But the first step would need to be that Wade, acting as town treasurer, would call upon the taxpayer to pay the taxes. And then he would also say, you know, if you don't pay in, it just doesn't reasonable amount of time, then, you know, it will be turned over to an attorney for collection. And our tax sales are done through Jim Elliot. I talked to Jim Elliot's office within the past week just about, you know, tax sales in general. be to authorize a public hearing or the change in that ordinance, if you all want to do that. Um, regarding the, the question with Tessie, we talked about at the last council meeting, um, there's a lot of properties that are number one, derelict and number two, you know, delinquent and taxes. And in order to sell those properties to satisfy the taxes, it would have to be delinquent for two years and then after that you can sell them. Um, I know there was some curiosity about kind of what's the next steps once the properties are delinquent? And I printed out just kind of a little spreadsheet on it. Unfortunately, and you all have, as we're on the deep end, I think I made ten copies there. But, um, the first step would need to be that Wade, acting as town treasurer, would call upon the taxpayer to pay the taxes. And then he would also say, you know, if you don't pay in, it just doesn't reasonable amount of time, then, you know, it will be turned over to an attorney for collection. And our tax sales are done through Gem Elliot. I talked to Gem Elliot's office within the past week just about, you know, tax sales in general, one specific property, and also kind of what's your process going forward? And they said that right now, they, any properties they have for Notaway, delinquent taxes, because he collects for the county of Notaway too, and I believe the town of Blackston. So, and the town of Prue. So he gets those properties all together and then schedules an auction for some time in the future and tries to auction them off. Um, I asked, you know, they generally put every property that was turned down up for auction again the next time. I did ask them when they would be having another auction and they said at this point that they don't have one scheduled. So they don't know, you know, when it'll be. But I know they do it with, you know, pretty reasonable time period. So there should be one coming up certainly in this year. I don't know how comforting that is, but, you know, they should have one coming up fairly soon. Uh, so a lot of the process in terms of the timeline of how to collect the taxes really depends on when the, um, sale is set for. And at this point, there's no defined sale date for Notaway. I hope that's a little bit helpful. I know that's not completely helpful because there, we really don't know a time period of right now of when delinquent properties would be able to be sold for certain, but at least it kind of gives you all an overview.
So Tessie, the process there, if a property goes to sale, nobody bids on it or comes in front of a listed price that's not accepted, is it put back up again?
Yes, yes.
Is that over, is it over, over again?
Yes, generally so.
And I'm taking it as like a reserve bid at a certain way, or common state on taxes or whatnot?
It depends. Um, not necessarily. It depends on what entity is a taxess and what that entity will take. So, in other words, if it's a ridiculously low bid, you know, that, let's say the taxes are about a county and the town, which, you know, can happen, then they would reserve that right to, you know, reject the bid. So, usually, as far as I know, and I could be talking, you know, completely wrong, I do not think there's necessarily a reserve bid, but certainly the taxing entity would have the power to accept or reject that bid.
Mr. Gunnar? There was, there was in the paper this past week in, in my, there was from county, okay? Cause it, it was by-
He has it ever sprayed.
Okay, cause I know it was by the same, yes, so that was county, that didn't include ours.
It probably did not. Now, if that's something that you all are interested in, you know, joining to act as early, to, you know, brief you on that process.
If the county missed a property, they'll get it in the O S too. Is there a priority lien on taxes?
It depends. And I say it depends, it's because it depends on the year of the taxes. So, in other words, the oldest taxes would become, you know, are the most priority liens. And then you go from there. Now, let's say the county and the county had a lien in the same year, then those would be on the same priorities. And so-
Well, does, do both have to be satisfied in order to transfer ownership of property to say somebody did it?
If, if the county and the town insisted on those being paid in full, then yes. But the county and the town could accept something less if they wanted to. But, um, yeah, it will be whatever the taxing entity would accept to transfer the property.
In terms of some of these blighted assets, if it's just a small amount of taxes, maybe cutting off the shore in order to eliminate some of the blight? Cause that's the, that's the underlying issue that I think we're trying to, trying to address.
Yeah, and that property on, is one we tried, it worked. Yeah.
Oh, I've got a few, sorry. Okay. I have reviewed the code, uh, the town approved town code and have several revisions that I'm working with, uh, Wade and Tiffany on that. And I still have to review the zoning part, but that shouldn't take nearly as long as the actual whole comprehensive town care does.
Full code please.
Yes, we're providing updates and rate clarifying. Um, the zoning memo, I have the suggested changes to the zoning ordinance, if anyone would like to repeat them again, to allow the home occupations. Um, and then, uh, with regards to the most recent derelict buildings, a complaint was filed on the derelict building we talked about last time and all interested parties were served on April the twenty-eighth. And so now we're just waiting for twenty-one days, assuming that no one files an answer that you can proceed from this.
Okay. Right now, when we go into continuing business, you need, in order to pursue, um, to proceed on the grass, you need council to decide if they want to go down to seven inches, right?
Or seven days, excuse me, seven days notification. If that's something you all want to do. Or whatever you all want to do and then offer a public hearing and then we'll therefore drag it down.
And I believe there, um, on the zoning, then you need council to decide in a vote of how they want to pursue.
Yes, if they want to form a committee or if they want to. And if council is ready, did council propose to revert to the planning commission for a recommendation to council?
Is that what we met on that time? With Al, Jameson, Wade? Well, it was only one, no, but the four one.
Well, that, that was the initial part that, that-
That we gave.
Right, Tessie was there, right. And then the council needs to approve all of it to do.
In particular, amendments and changes to the card orders.
And then it will be referred to the planning commission, then the planning commission makes a recommendation to council. And that council can, you know, in planning commission, it would be a public notice, here's a bad. And then planning commission makes its recommendation to council and then prior to the council adopting the zoning ordinance and, you know, either rejecting or accepting the planning commission's recommendation, there would need to be another public hearing.
Also, the economic development committee's got a chance to, uh, take a look at it before we send it off to the planning commission, since it's a law business.
Any, any questions over town?
Yes, thank you.
Can you find out some information on the, the rights of landlord? Their rights of kicking people out and processing all that stuff? Because I believe they also, also want to be accountable for what they allow in their building.
Yes.
And I need to know what their rights are because-
What's the, if their priority concern was?
How many days you gotta get, you know, notified? Um, if they put, uh, add in the newspaper, you know, cause you can't discriminate or anything like that, but I think you still have a right to pick who you want. Cause I've heard that if you put it in newspapers on first serve, I don't see that, but it could be true. Yeah, it's a big girl. So, I, cause I want to find out what, what rights they have.
Can I do that? If they, they have to have a specific reason to pick someone?
Cause certain landlords, when the police department or their problems, their renters, when they have, I think, as a landlord, I mean, well, the landlord myself, I, if I don't like what they're doing in my house, I will get them out.
Now, I can tell you that a lot of those questions will, um, depend on the lease. Not so much the right to pick who you want part, but a lot of it depends on what the lease is, what the landlord invented, and whether the landlord specifies, you know, those sorts of activities are breaches or not. If there's any way that a copy of the lease could be located, that would be beneficial. But if not, you know, the Virginia landlord, you know, act does also provide for default things, but, you know, the landlord could change that default with the lease. So, if you all could get it and see a full copy of all this stuff.
And this big hole in the county. This might out, out, cannot be handled.
Tessie, on, on behalf of me, what, what I have found, and just like our situation a week and a half ago, when the state police came and helped our police department with something and the judge approved it and all, that then, um, to me, it seems like a landlord should, should also be accountable if they own the property for the activities that are going on in that property.
It, 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 yeah. It depends on what sort of accountability or, like criminally or civilly or, you know, criminally.
You know, something else, thank you Tessie, we should talk maybe about enjoying them as a common nuisance. That's a way that we could, it's a civil remedy for criminal activity in those kind situations. So, I'll, I will talk to Tessie.
Because just from my observance of, of these past eight, nine months, it seems like our, what I have observed in my mind, and I've talked to Art about this, is that where we have the most situations is in rental property. And when you bring up the landlord and they come into town hall, it's like they expect the police to do, you know, handle all their troubles and all. And to me, you know, it's a business. It's a business. They're providing something and receiving money for it. And, you know, you, if, if a company makes tires, they're held liable for the quality of the tires, you know, you, if you're taking money, you need to be held liable for the quality of, you know, what you're doing to the community, to the citizens and, you know, the taxpayers. And I, and I, and it's like we just don't know as, as a body here, how far we can go. And we really do want to go as far as we can.
We're all tired. We're all tired of this mess out here. I know they're doing all they can. And we, I've talked to them about it myself and I know they're doing everything they can. It's just-
What happens if they- They're in their road.
No, that happened to me down here. Last week.
Anything else in the council? From the town?
Thank you. I'll be glad. Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on to community reports. Community development.
I would defer to wait and ask if they can call in sending the bills, the progress. I've, it's been moving right along as it, I do, things were being done and as soon as it gets done, they submit bills to the new services.
Fifty gets a lot of the money.
And I thought that was going out to find that next week too, if there's a bit of snags.
Any questions for community developments? Economic development.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Uh, the month of May is Business Appreciation Month here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And as such, we've, uh, we've had a Facebook, uh, activity for, for the past, uh, past week or so, where we highlight a, uh, a business here in town and, uh, just get them a little, little bit of exposure. Uh, so we'll continue that through the, uh, through the end of the month for Business Appreciation Month. And if anyone has a specific business that they would like highlighted, just send us a, uh, send us a quick message and we'll, uh, we'll be sure to, uh, to get on there. And, uh, pictures do help too. Uh, otherwise I have to just go and find pictures and, uh, and put them up. Uh, Bill Foss mentioned the, uh, open house. Uh, that's great. It's another business opening up here in, uh, here in downtown. Uh, so come out to that, support them. Uh, I've been, uh, starting on redoing the, uh, website again. Uh, if you want to go to townofprue.com and offer any suggestions, input for, uh, uh, I, I, I think it's looking a little bit better. But just, uh, just go and visit and, uh, and we'll, uh, we'll go from there. It's going to take a little bit longer, um, cause I only have, you know, weekend sort on it. But feel free to offer any, uh, any comments, suggestions, and we'll, uh, we'll get that up and running. Uh, last week, I went to a, uh, a dinner with the Secretary of Commerce and Trade, Maurice Jones, uh, out in South Boston. And then a, then a summit in South Hill the, the next day on, uh, what the, uh, what the governor calls the new Virginia economy. Uh, and essentially the, uh, the summit boiled down to, uh, to two main points. Uh, regionalism, uh, wherein as far as businesses looking, respective businesses are concerned, borders don't matter. Uh, we, you know, our, our town border can be somewhere, the county border can be, but they just look at the, uh, the region in general. So we really need to start thinking more regionally, uh, in terms of economic development. And then, uh, the other, uh, main point was what we've been, uh, looking, focusing on for the past, uh, past couple of years. And that's the concepts of innovation and the, uh, and place-based development, wherein we try to create a, a community, uh, where people want to live, work, you know, and raise a family. And a lot of what we talked about here, what we heard about here goes into, uh, goes into that, the, the safety, the, uh, uh, the comfort of individuals, uh, offering some of these, uh, some of these alternatives like parks and, uh, and walkable communities, uh, expressing our authenticity, showcasing that. Uh, things like, uh, A J Perdido's Market, uh, the, the authentic, uh, locally grown things. Those are all things that contribute to creating a place where people want to bring their jobs. Uh, and that's, you know, what we've, uh, what we've been trying to focus on. So it was, uh, it was good and refreshing to, uh, to hear that, uh, down in, uh, South Hill. Um, as you've probably read, the Town of Prue was featured on the cover of Virginia Time and City Magazine. Uh, we were the, uh, the cover story along with, uh, Town of Leesburg and the City of Richmond, uh, on our heel efforts. And as we know, uh, the Town of Prue is Virginia's first healthy eating, active living community. Uh, that doesn't mean we're the healthiest community, that just means that we're, 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 we're making a concerted effort to, um, to address some of those issues. And I've got another, uh, comment on that during, uh, Councilman Sis' report. Uh, also just bumping, jumping back to, uh, to South Hill. Uh, two of the, uh, speakers, uh, at the, uh, at the summit were from Marion, down in southwest Virginia, and, uh, in St. Paul. And they had some really great stuff. And St. Paul is, uh, about ninety people, so it's, you know, Burville size. And what, what they did was they used one of their, one of their assets, uh, ATV trails and created a whole industry and a whole tourist destination based on those ATV trails. Um, and their, uh, their town staffer who was there, uh, was really unchecked. So, I'm actually thinking about talking to the, uh, to the mayor and mayor of Burville and maybe taking a weekend and we can go visit them and hear more about what they're doing. Now Marion has a pop-up businesses and they've really been, uh, been leading, leading the way on that for their, uh, for their downtown. Uh, so we may want to at least reach out to them some more and hear more about. Uh, that is it.
Can I have a question? Have you gotten the results back from our tourism conference?
Yes, uh, the, but the Economic Development Committee hasn't been able to meet yet. Uh, and once we do and review those, we'll, uh-
Okay.
Uh, because, yeah, the, the meeting was originally scheduled for last week. Um, but I had that, I had that summit to go to. And then we, uh, we rescheduled for today, but, uh, several people couldn't make it.
Thank you. Any questions?
I would like to congratulate them. I have thoroughly enjoyed the business recognition on the computer and look forward to see who you're featuring it today. So it's, but if, that's a very good thing.
Okay, facilities and partner recreation.
Everything going good? Um, Mayfall and softball on full, full swing. Park over there looks beautiful. Uh, the flags look good at the memorial. Grass is planted. The town did a great job of running that out. Really happy that they got that done and, um, besides, well, helped with the, uh, BMW and American Legion. And that is the itch, other than, in the whole, we have to shuffle out the Wi-Fi, that being a facility for that you want. That being the facility. Or do you want to rent the library?
We have tried the friends of the library. We have tried the librarian. I, excuse me, I have tried the friends of the library and I have tried the librarian. I have tried Chuck. I'm good for wire cutters. Well, I mean, I hope we can turn our things on and off. I don't understand in a library, why they can't, you know, unplug it. I get this, I get this thing, oh, you know, we'll handle it and all, but now how long has this been going on? I'm talking about four, five months.
Just a quick suggestion. One thing that I have for my Christmas lights is a timer, so that it goes on and off at a certain time. And you set the time, plug it in, plug it in there, and it just turns on and off. If they got one of those for their router, they just set it and forget it?
All you have to do is cut it off when he shuts the door.
They change the password.
Well, you know, all being said, I, Mayor have been there and discussed it. We have discussed it. The police have discussed it. And I just, I have to say to you all, I don't understand it. It's something that before you all ever came up tonight, that months and months and months ago, I have requested that, because there is no reason after dark, kids need to be where their mothers and dads or their guardians are.
Do they have a curfew?
What exactly is the curfew?
Eleven o'clock.
Well, that's too late.
Why is it not enforced?
That is way too late.
There are kids in the street at one and two o'clock in the morning.
I mean, it should be a new ordinance. Fourteen years and under should be nine o'clock on school nights.
Thank you.
Ten o'clock. I'm sorry, that is just way too... No wonder I gave him a test when I told him to go home.
Public, oh, you have used...
Al talked to me the other day in reference to bills and everything and advised that everything is in order and accounted for.
Okay. All right. Public works and infrastructure.
Great weight and pretty much covered all that, the grass cutting and all. But oddly, we cut the grass, we won't be paid for it anymore. We're not going to be getting any. Probably not. That's all. Probably we got cleanup for it.
All right. Personnel. Congratulations to Tony and his family.
They work so hard. After forty years, I know how it feels.
Any questions, personnel? Okay, public safety.
Only thing I have is nothing on the fire department. Rescue squad, as y'all know, EMS week is May 18th through the 25th, which is a week after this. So, all its rescue squad, we take those statements. We'll probably answer over 2,600 calls this year, going the route we're going right now. We are replacing one ambulance that is being re-chested in North Carolina now. And that one comes back, re-chested another one. So, down from five ambulances to four for the rest of this year. Hopefully, we can make it all right. But appreciate all the support that the town and the public gives us, because like that, it's hard to exist. And only other thing that I have is on the safety. Let y'all know that I'm very concerned, just like y'all are, in reference to what's going on. Chief and I have had several conferences about it in the last several weeks. And one of which resulted in a state police sting, if you want to call it that. And we, as a council, are going to work on it. And pleased to y'all that we're going to get something done one way or the other.
Councilman, I just wanted to thank the public safety community, Fire Department specifically, for the dinner earlier this month, last month. That was a great event. Very much appreciate being able to work with that.
So, town conference of plan update. I have another meeting with Kelly Lewis on June 6th to finalize things. She's currently, they're very busy at the plan. She's currently working on the last parts of that. We'll go over that in the next meeting, hopefully have something to show council in July.
Okay, any questions about our conference of plan update? Please chief report.
Only thing I have is we're looking forward to homecoming this weekend and running some backstories again.
Okay, that brings me to my report. And the first thing that I too wanted to thank the fire department for dinner last week. It was very nice. It was very thoughtful of them along with the rescue squads from both Burville, Blackstone, and here in Crew, for all of us to be able to have the opportunity to come together and sit down for a dinner that was just, you know, exquisitely planned. The food was absolutely delicious. On the next note, it's about the Veterans Memorial. We know that it has been a long time coming. They are still in the process. The main stone from where the flagpoles are situated should arrive this month, and I know they will be putting that in. But I want to thank our employees and the town manager for working with the timescale schedule to be able for the employees to go over there. And Bill Royer and Charles Reed for coming and meeting with us so that we could get, with homecoming coming and May and the ball games and the tournaments in the summer, we really wanted to make that look a little more presentable for all the hard work that they have put into it, but it didn't have quite a complete or near-finished look. And I appreciate what, they asked for two loads of dirt and we may have given them eleven, twelve loads by the time, you know, to get it filled in.
The mayor asked for one flag.
I asked for one flag and got them all. I was so excited. I said, well, for homecoming, can we at least have the American flag up there? Even if we had to put it up and take it down daily, there's a sunset. And the town employees ran the power line, got it hooked up, and I went to walk the dog, and that was just so exciting to see all those flags up. Because it's been a long time coming, and I know it's still a process. But as we, as any entity works together, when you get more than one person trying to come together and make decisions and raise money and all, it ends up with a wonderful project. But maybe from the start to the finish, you know, you have the little speed bumps. And they have done a beautiful job. And the town has done a beautiful job to give us something to look at that says, you know, we cry as you come through town now. I thank also the Kiwanis and those who have volunteered last Saturday for the cleanup. And as Wade said, the town is still under, is still cleaning, you know, pick up your items that you sit out there along the curb that you need to get rid of, except for tires and paint cans and oil products and all, anything with like oil or something in it. But this is a great opportunity. We offer it in the spring. We offer it in the fall. You know, we need to take advantage of it, because we gather things, things break down, and we don't know what to do with them and all, you know. And this is a way to make our community look better. I want to remind you all about homecoming coming up this weekend. This is a big time for our town. Think back in 1988 was our centennial, and then the following year, 89, was the start of the homecoming weekends. And it has carried on. A lot of the original members are still, you know, having to carry on, taking part and seeing, you know, that things are brought together. This year, early, early winter, one of the individuals on homecoming came to us, the town, and said that wouldn't, it would be nice if the ball games weren't during the times when the kids could come for free up at Cooper Park and all. And Steve took it to the rec association. They were able to work that in. And that's cooperation. That's really appreciated, because they're doing that Friday night for the children. And I know moms and dads and grandmas have kids on the ball field. They can't be in two places at one time. And I appreciate them waiting until three o'clock on Saturday, when mainly the functions downtown are over. We want everybody to participate. They can't, starting at the community center, the library here. Be a good time, citizens, to come on in and tell them about your Wi-Fi that, you know. But you see how beautiful the library has been renovated. And it is used by a lot of people in the community. It is a plus. And this is a bad hiccup that we've got with the Wi-Fi, but it's something I think is workable. And I think, you know, we'll get our point across to why it's so valuable for it to be turned off. But come down over in the, by the ball fields and all. They'll have the tractors and all kinds of activities. And if you haven't been to the River Museum lately, this is a great time to, you know, to come and, you know, stick your head in and see what is new. The Chamber, and one of the things I, next time I wanted to talk to you about, just very briefly, and it's also a continuing business, an architectural firm from Lynchburg, H-L-H-D-L-A, yes. H-D-L-A, Hard Los Angeles. They were able to come up with the opportunity for this town to enter a grant, an opportunity to gain a grant that would help us with our comprehensive plan goal of a master plan for this town, and we have Hardscape and Softscape. And Wade and I had no idea, we talked about it last month, we approved it, but we had no idea what height we had to have in until about 11 o'clock last Wednesday, that we had to have in letters of support. And everything had to be in the Lynchburg by Friday. And then, today, it had to be in Charleston. Today was the deadline for the grant. And some of you with businesses saw me with my head popped in on Thursday. And I was so pleased. I wanted to let you know that in our business, in the Chamber, I happened to send to our Chamber president a little memo, and he sent it out to all the Chamber members. And we had nineteen letters, on letter that came from, starting with the county. I should start with our state delegate Wright, that then went, the county provided a letter. Joe Marzett provided a letter. And it just, you know, blossomed. High School, the porticulture teacher. We got nineteen business letters. And I went to the businesses around on foot and all, and I got twenty-three business owners or managers' signatures that, so we had a total of fifty-two letters or signatures of recommendation that went with that grant today. And that was in two days. I told Wade, if we had had two months, we probably wouldn't have done that well, because you just, you know, you just do it with so intensity and all. But I thank everybody, and this will be a benefit to our whole community if we are able to obtain this. We got a memo today with the copy of the grant this afternoon. And they said that if we didn't get it the first time, they'd be ready for the second time. But I have my fingers crossed that with such great response that we can get it the first time. And my final comments is if you look at your feet, you'll see we have new carpet. And this was a long time coming. And we're real, we are real pleased.
I miss that stripe that, you know.
And it does coordinate with what goes, it's different from the libraries, but the colors are similar and all. And so, we hope that, you know, this will provide good wear and good durability for the next ten, fifteen years. On the sad note, those that are in organizations and all that use this room, there will be no food or drink except for water in this room. It is not going to be a social room. But we just, we want to keep this nice. We feel like we want this for, you know, looking professional when you all come for a meeting. So, I will, any questions from the council?
I did just want to also recognize, in addition to the Homecoming Committee, these brochures look really good. They look great. And I think Bill Foss and J.B. P. Printing should be recognized for their great work.
I would like to go back to the release and to the homecoming and say that I'm sure we can expect the safety and all that we've had in the past. We made it something that used to come up every week, and I would think, oh my, where's the profit? And so, I think being that we're doing it for the weekend, we can do it for more things. And we won't be intimidated by undesire.
Okay, new business.
I did have a business, Mayor. Speaking of grants, and what I was going to mention before, there's a HEAL grant available. It's up to $9,000 for improvements to one of the HEAL initiatives, either mobility or additional recreation. I know we've been talking about getting a, some sort of a, like a park. Kiosk, thank you. A kiosk and then putting additional signage and physical activities around the, around the walking trail. I don't know if that's something we want to pursue. There is a match requirement. I believe it's a 50% match for up to $9,000. That's one option. Another option I thought of, but I'm sort of a little iffy on, one because of the price, two because it may create additional issues. But it's been suggested in the past that we look at a basketball court. Now, that's incredibly pricey and would far exceed the $9,000. So, we may not want to go to that grant. I believe Blackstone's cost is about $24,000. So, I'm leaning more towards the kiosk and the signage. But I'm willing to hear options and meet with the Person Rec.
The, I guess the LA Dave, they grant also, we're going to get two kiosks, right?
Oh, okay.
But it's still, I mean, don't mean that we're going to get age, yeah, but we're still talking.
It's going to help in planning, planning. Then from the plan, you can farm, Farmville, from the time they got their plan to where we see them now, if we go downtown, took fourteen years. So, I want, you know, it's not one thing that happens overnight. And as I went through sampled letters, you could see year after year, they were applying for different grants that helped them with little sections of their master plan. So, you know, as to say, the money that comes from this grant will pay for our plan, not for the specifics in the plan.
But we can discuss more in a Person Rec committee meeting and identify needs. But if that's, the council's okay with us looking into that. And I know the grant cycle ends end of June. So, we create a plan and bring it to council at our next meeting and for approval.
Do I have a motion on that?
Don't know if we need a motion. We were just creating a plan.
We'll hit with the town of Cleveland.
Perfect. That'll work. And if anyone has any suggestions for other physical Healthy Eating Act of Living activities that we can, that you notice around town, that we can look at. This is a great opportunity to do that with decreased cost to the town.
Any comments, any additions? Any other new business?
One more piece of new business. Cleaning up the streets this weekend. I had a quick question for the chief. Do we get, often get community service individuals? Okay, is there a way to get more of them?
We don't do it.
We don't do it?
We run into some issues and some problems with that. We really don't have the manpower to put somebody out there to supervise them where they're supposed to be. So, we kind of shy.
Okay. Does the school system still do that sort of stuff? I'm just thinking about getting to plan the place so we can see these streets continually. cleaned up under a regular basis.
I might want to talk to the next president. I have to commit somebody. The R T C is always willing.
Okay, that's a.
Well, we got a group of people like here. I mean, why can't we all get together and have a community cleanup day?
We tried that.
Not the probation officer supervised community service workers? No. Any other business?
Well, so are we considering this about in the election? This is going to be business.
The, that's under continuing, yes, yes, ma'am. Okay. Any other business? Moving on to continuing business. First is the zoning ordinance changes in the residential area. Right now, we need to know where to go forth, what council wants to do to go forth on this other.
Well, to me, the next step would be us, forming a committee. We don't have an ordinance committee. To review the information that Tessie gave us, actually sit down and decide to go forward, draw that up, how we look at these for seconds. And then review that, and council look at that, and then it goes from plans to mission. And we have, obviously, we have to have some materials. And the first step to me would be, for this committee, whoever it is, to sit down and look at the specific information she gave us and how we want to change this.
My council?
I think a committee would be a good idea.
May I have that in form of a motion?
I move it. Form a committee to evaluate the zone ordinances.
Okay. Okay, just a second. Okay, all those in favor of an ordinance committee be formed to go over this residential one ordinance, signify by aye. Any opposed? Okay, so moved.
Sure.
Now, who do you, who do you as council on this committee? As you know, there can only be two council people and the town manager from the council table.
Retired people, fever. We are all the owners. Since the hour you're here, you appoint him?
No, no. The ones that were in the committee that met with Tessie were the town manager, myself, were Alan Lobbie, yes. And Tessie, you were there though.
Well, I would recommend at least one, be somebody that knows how to use a computer. They need to understand what we're talking about.
Robert, you know, you're the computer.
No, sir. I don't know how to tell it all or nothing. I'll be on committee if you want to.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, he will be the one person, so he knows how to use the computer.
I think I heard him volunteer.
I did, too. I told him to hold it over there.
I would also like to point out, though, Mayor, that any committee appointed by the council is a extension of the council, and therefore all the meetings are open to the public unless they need a specific way of extension.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Just want to throw in, especially when we're talking about rezoning, and that's an important issue for it to be incredibly transparent about.
And any other council comments? All right, so we need to meet before the next council meeting, regular council meeting.
Your wing's due.
I'll get you a schedule.
Any other questions about the zoning? Okay, the next is the H D L A grant update, which I gave you a brief. That June 12th will be the date that supposedly granted, when it's announced. Did you have any additional questions about that grant?
Just thank you to you and the council for your hard work on that.
And thanks to the citizens that, you know, were so willing to, you know, at a moment's notice to that, to Philanco's support. Next is our budget, 2015, 2016. Still had, I sent out an email with questions where the town manager was not sure that we made a set recommendation on finishing up the budget. The first one, and I'll bring this up, is the percentage of where. He was not sure whether you were sticking with the 3% or... Pardon? We only had two answer. I mean, two out of seven, two out of seven.
Well, honestly, then, what I say, I felt like the 3% if we dropped it to two or five, and perhaps save something to a slush fund, because a whole lot of things are going to be coming up that cause us to need extra money and the unknown things. And that would leave a little bit. And I defer to the people that have been on this council and have seen this type of thing happen. That would be my inclination, is to do that, so for future, that we know is coming, some is fun, some of the bills we know are coming, and we don't pay any taxes to people.
Going along the same, the same thing that I said in my response. The town employees are definitely deserving of the raise, but we may want to just look at it, be a little more fiscally conservative about it, and look at the rest of the budget, and then from the rest of the budget, determine if we have the 3% in there. If there are any other needs that we, that needs to be met. I know, but there were some other, there were 11, 12, 13, 13 questions that the mayor sent us. So maybe if we table that. Because I don't want to commit to something and then have to go back and change it.
Any other comments on that before? The next one was the car. Wade, you said the cost of the car would be approximately 26?
Total.
Total. So then if we secure the grant?
Five, we'd be granted 45,000. Low and slow, two and a half percent. Twenty-two, one, twenty-two, twenty-one.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
I want a second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we pursue USDA funding loan of 55, 45 on a $26,000 media call.
That's state counter policy.
Any question?
Which would, are we pursuing that now rather than later because we got a brand name? Because as Wade had said, he really doesn't need one.
No, I didn't say that. I said, I'm fine with what I have.
Okay.
There was some discussion about putting the courtesy bill for it there. And so it was more of a Kilted Birds with one stone.
Okay, so it would be the combination of which you do approve?
Hundred forty-five thousand dollars, I believe, and this started to go rough. But not that I care, it gets me to and fro.
So then you do approve of this?
The opportunity for the grant loan.
That's what I was saying.
If we weren't, if we were just relying on financing, I would absolutely just say. Which is identical to what we got with the new Ford from R.D. They've been very good, Josh, very good.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, question? All those in favor of obtaining USDA funding at 55, 45 match for the town for $26,000 total for the purchase of the car, signify by aye? Opposed, like some? So this will be added to the budget? Okay. Right. Okay, then the additional items for the budget?
Only two I was concerned about with those two. The rest of those, I think, need to be looked into further down the road. There's a whole lot of discussion that needs to be born on some of those things. I, for one, don't think that it's necessary we do that right now.
My concern is that we've been saying the same thing, have the extra help in the office for, since I've been on council. Each year we come to the budget and we say, well, let's push it off until next year. And we tabled it for. You know, I brought it up every time because the auditors.
Right now, we need to discuss it like on the number of the budget.
What can we discuss it later on?
Do we have a job description? I'd like to see a detailed job description. That was one of the things that the town manager said to me when we were making up these questions to send to act, was that, you know, he needed to really think about what duties that one would perform that was being hired before, instead of hiring someone and then giving them the duty, you know, and then giving the job description, you know. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And I'm fine with that, and I'm fine with the table in the end again, but I would ask that the town manager and I guess the personnel committee create that and just set a deadline so that we can move forward with this, or next time it comes up.
But I'm of the opinion we don't need to.
But move forward or not move forward, if it's not necessary. I think they decide what they would be doing, then you'll know whether it's needed.
One of the things.
And I know you're pushing because the auditors say that's what.
The audit situation was, it was all, because that was a matter of split fees, they wouldn't do that. So that's not a questionable, the auditors have not mentioned it, that we need to actually change the balance.
One of the duties, though, that was discussed would be the possibility, the future of, say, building inspector, you know, someone that had the expertise, but, right. But it was really, you felt like at this point it was too much to try to come up with something right at this particular time and do it well.
And we can, we can table it, but just to come together and think about these issues, especially the thing I'm looking at, or some of these overseeing the big picture things like the Comptess Plan and the strategies and goals associated with that, and moving forward with that. Because the town offices, I'm sure you know it, is pretty bought down over there. I was in there today.
Busy, I mean, we're certainly busy.
Absolutely.
We're not holding.
Well, we can table this until, but I would like.
You know, being our day to day, watching what goes on, I can say that's the case.
Okay, now, on the total of our budget, you realize that unless you come up with tonight, we will need, and I'm not pushing it, but you will need another work session this month in order to finish this out. So, you know, as long as you realize leaving here this evening that we will not have completed our town budget. The next scheduled, work scheduled would normally be, I think it's, it ends up being Memorial Day. And I would request that because that is one day that our employees have off, that we either meet Monday before, which will be next Monday, or the Tuesday after Memorial Day, Monday, so. What is your plan?
We can do it, uh, in eight, two weeks, four weeks?
So if we did it on the Tuesday.
Well, we might not, we might not have a special week.
What about next Monday? Bill, how many weeks does that give us?
That gives us three weeks, next Monday.
That would be, so next Monday at 7:00 P.M., work session, budget. Okay. Any other, town manager, anything else on the budget right now? Okay. Councils, anything else on the budget? So next Monday at 7:00 P.M. Okay. One of the things that we discussed while doing the budget at our work session was we talked about changing the town election from spring to fall, when we were looking at the cost of election that we pay for the citizens and the amount of turnout. We have our attorney here, we needed to know, Wade and I, if you all are serious about pursuing it, if you are, and we're in a motion so that Tessie can begin, you know, doing research of how we go about this.
As I mentioned in another, I have, I spoke with the people in Burkeville who already transferred theirs, and I have our, our code book, but we would be following. And they have, you do not have to go as Wade, I was talking to him earlier, it is not as complicated now. They've just changed this so that it's very simple, and we would change our ordinance. So they said that. And I was looking back to see it changes in ordinance. But I have time, it's here for that. But no, after we do all that, Tessie, she can bless it. But I know, the main thing, it is a cost, you do save, Burkeville has given me, well, how much they save. But I think more than that, when you have our elections at a time where it's more elections, you will get a better turnout. We have, all places have gotten so, what, 50 people show up and vote? And, but I think that we would get a whole lot more opinions if we were on there with the rest of them. I think that's pretty advantageous.
How would it affect terms?
I would.
How would it affect terms?
You just keep on going. That's why some people have known. It extends it from the.
The initial, the initial one.
That you would be taking.
Or less, if you were more. You actually could cut it off.
Yeah, and what if anybody got to that point and had to resign? I mean, we, you were dealing with that. But yes, it does.
That happened in Burkeville. And that's something, when you, when you read the history in our, in our code book, it talks about when they went to this, that it was, you know, changed, and that one year they had it in the specific terms of how it would be handled, you know.
That happened in Burkeville. We had a person to die, and they had to replace them, and I think two months, and then she ran.
We have situations. One thing we also mentioned was looking at staggered four-year terms rather than everyone running all at once every two years. And I don't know, council's thoughts on that? So, first I heard of that.
Okay, well, before we get the cart, before the horse, let's first, you know, is there a motion that anybody wants to make, or do you want to think about it?
I think see if someone writing from an attorney and reference to, you know, to pursue it that way, to make sure we get all the bases for it.
Okay, so you're, you don't want a motion, you just want to ask her to do that?
Right.
Okay, is that how the rest of you feel?
Is it going to cost us anything? No number of courses.
It's gonna cost us anything, no number of courses, right? Because we have, you know, we have expense every, every other name.
I think you share the expense.
Yeah, but what does it gonna cost us, you know, other than you get more people in, which is good, so we can even vote for our own, our own, whatever.
That would be something that would need to be looked into. Did you hear what he asked? He asked, was it gonna cost us more?
Cost us less? Cost us less?
That's what I heard.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Plus more people coming to vote. And that is the plus, you have so many more people voting.
Exactly, right. It's a little bit of money. I thought it would've been more. Bertle said they have got seven hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-two cents, but I thought they, they pay the people that are working it and...
But everybody shares that expense when you have the big election.
That's right, that's right. So it saves some money and it also, I think, return.
So, town attorney, could you look at and give us a report back and then they can...
I'm gonna meet and I'll call you back.
Decide if they want to pursue this in or just... Okay, do you know what exactly the council wants you to do?
I believe so. Looking into the legality of switching and what is the downside in terms of legally switching the election from May to November and then also what sort of corresponding term change and how we can think about that as well.
And you could follow that up and finalize, you know, your recommendation.
Councilwoman Dalton, would you like to share the information that you have on Bertle with the attorney down?
Yes, I will give her everything I've got. And I think you're going to really follow her simple ideas and they have really simplified, which is not at all like the government. I mean, to come up with less paperwork and everything to do, but I will pass these, since I made the copies, I will pass these out to remind you what we already have on the books.
Right. Any other comments on that? I know the town manager, he tells me that when we get through these meetings and then we get back and we find we left one step out of how, you know, pursuit, so I'm now gonna bring up again about the, the grass. Whether you want to change it from ten inches to seven inches, ten days to seven days.
Seven and seven.
Seven and seven. May I have that in the way?
Seven days, seven.
Seven inches. Okay, may I have that in the way of a motion? Okay, it has been moved that our ordinance be changed from ten inches to seven inches, the day amount from ten days to seven days. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Just a, one recommendation, we're changing the ordinance, so we need a public hearing, correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
That's all we made.
Perfect.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor signify by aye. Any opposed, like some? Anything else before I ask?
You're okay.
Just one more piece of public business, just a quick reminder to council that the FOIA forum we've been planning is scheduled for Wednesday at seven o'clock at the High School Mini Auditorium, so feel free to come out to that and the public's invited to that as well. It's, it's a forum where we have the executive director of the Virginia FOIA Council, Freedom of Information Act, to come in and just, we've invited all of the elected officials across the county and the public to come in and just refresh ourselves on the Freedom of Information Act, our responsibilities to the, to the citizens and look forward to that, to refreshing ourselves on government transparency. That's at seven o'clock on Wednesday in the High School Mini Auditorium.
It's coming Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday.
Any other continuing business? Public comments, any other public comments? I must say that we have heartfelt heard what you have said. We recognize that we've been trying and we will really try to come up with a solution.
One addition I did have after hearing all your budget things, I know that this year is coming to a close and perhaps you could fund some more money for the police department if you can buy bars and park around people and give them another officer so we can have a little talk, perhaps.
At least part-time.
I'm happy.
Any other public comments?
I would like to do the yard sale if you will allow me to.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for allowing me to come late. I did another meeting tonight. I had to go talk a minute while I come here to do this. I have had major sickness, my husband is ill. I've got no sense, I have been in the hospital and taking care of him for the last month and a half, so I'm not quite ahead yet, but it's been rough. My husband is eighty-three, my mother's ninety-five and she's hanging tight, keeping her busy. But I want you to look at this, this is an old one, Bill Foster's not to blame. He got me started early this year, we were gonna have new flyers by first of May. Well, guess what this is? We got an old flyer. But on the inside, all of the dates for the next twelve years after two fourteen are right on the inside as well as a map. The new flyers, if I have to get somebody to help me, will be out by the end of May and I need help from the town of Crewe. I have not been fed to anybody this year, I've not been able to do the things that I needed to do. This is going to grow this year and the new one is gonna say hundred miles of growth. Chase City is doing their one hundred and fiftieth or something anniversary and doing big stuff in Chase City and they asked a tag with us this year and it worked, then they're gonna keep on being with us. So we're going all the way to Chase City, go right up three sixty and I think it's nine miles over Chase City, the young, up three sixty, seven miles from Keith, nine miles from three sixty into Chase City. So it's gonna get bigger and better all the time. I promise you it's gonna grow next year, I probably will not be back next year. I cannot handle this old woman and two other old people, but look at your card. Bill did get the new cards done for me, he would have had these done long ago if I had had it, but look at your card, that's the new card, it's July fourth this year. Now, how many business people are gonna be closed on July fourth? The bank's gonna be one of them, I don't know who else. Some of the, most of the restaurants, as far as I can tell, but Hardest will be open. I don't know of Bravos and some of the others. Louie's is always closed for a week on July fourth, best day of the year for him, never late, never late. But let me tell you, they all don't need me. This is up and going, I'm gonna turn over to somebody else, I might have to go to some meetings next year, but I'll redo it for somebody else and we're gonna keep on growing. I know some other people that are very, very interested and I need to know, did we put that thing in and y'all waited, as long as it's a July sale, so the people don't have to pay much, put that in. Well, what can you as a town of Crewe do to help me get this out, because I am slow this year and I'm doing two meetings at a time in order to get it moved? How can we get this out to Crewe and around Crewe? What can the town of Crewe do for you?
We'll have it on Facebook, we'll have it online and...
You're gonna have that map?
I even have my tablet.
Just, who is this?
Well, if Bill Foster would send me the latest version of this, I can certainly put it on our website.
It's gonna be here, it's gonna be here.
Absolutely.
What did he do, leave when I started speaking? I've been praising you and you long. Anyway, I'm sure that Bill would get it to you. If I ever get with Bill so we can get it straight, but I promised him by the end of this week he's gonna have the information and if I get the information, he will have the flyers to it. Now, how can we get the flyers out if I cannot do it? I don't get it passed to everybody. How do we get the flyers out if I cannot do it?
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce. You would not thought of the Chamber of Commerce, because I go to that meeting and I never saw you there, now why'd you say it?
I just said that suggestion.
Is that true?
Ms. Morton, if you bring them to town hall, we'll make sure the businesses get a ballot.
The businesses get a ballot, yes, that's no problem.
Bill will put it on the...
They also want, it's gonna have a new look. We wipe this clean, we're gonna have new sponsors and we'll have that business names and telephone number so people can call before they get crew, say, hey, I like the looks of this, can I go see where are you? And that's will make it bigger and better also. All right, what do you need me to do other than take care of my husband and my mother and practice daily?
You just get those flyers to town hall and we will, we will get them distributed in the areas of Crewe, no problem.
Anything else I need to say?
Jerry Hent usually handles Bertle in and I help her with Crewe. Last year we had over four thousand people come through here for that event. We beg and I usually talk to Larry Parrish and Booth, we need two officers that day for traffic control.
Two plus, two plus. We want safety too, just like y'all do for Hong Kong, we want safety first. Be kind to people that don't have any sense, please. There'll be plenty yard sales that don't have any sense, they looking for the ball and they're not looking for the park.
They literally backed up from...
We had somebody on railroad, Sasa Electric, on the side of the burning park. And we're stuck, we're blocking streets, we are actually shutting down streets in Bertle this year and putting some one way and Bill, Billy has been offered help, whether he will take it or not, I don't know, but my sons act as policemen and direct traffic through every day and you have that, it's four thousand in Bertle and we make, Joe Marzett, see, I can't even think, Joe Marzett very happy on the July sale, very happy, he just bounces all day long. Look how many people he gets to talk to. Anything else I can do? I just say thank you. Especially for the thanks, thanks for letting me come late. I was at a full meeting, I'm back here and I forgot to get home and see what's going on with my husband because he does stupid things when I'm not...
Just get the pamphlets to us at town hall and we'll get them out.
And I commend Jerry for doing this, how many years have you been doing this for?
This is sick, this is sick.
I was with her at the first meeting and people laughed at her. This sale brought in over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year along with the route.
What a paper of Crewe, what a paper of Crewe, records and so.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, may I have a made a motion for German? All those in favor, aye, 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 aye.